Okay, everyone, have a seat. Coffee, certainly, you don't want to stop you from doing that. Let me just sort of open up to everyone just a little bit. First off, I think it's been a good session, people are talking, they're expressing their views. It is a matter of diversity of view. It is about serving the public and soliciting the public's input. Those are the ones we serve, those are the ones we provide these public services to. It's also about teaming. There's a bunch of different teams, some of them bigger than others. Certainly, there's the team at the top that serves the public, and that's council, and its manager. And then, of course, the manager has her team of managing staff who inter, each of their departments, members who serve that team. And together, it's one big team. And that team needs to operate as efficiently as it can. And in the best run, organizations in the world, in the best run municipalities in the world, there are always going to be bumps in that road. That's the nature of human beings working together. Okay? I guess what I, sort of, as we come back to talking about this a little bit, one of the things that was talked about was the relationship between staff and council. So, what I sort of throw out, and I asked Andrew to, Paine's, to sort of, unofficially on behalf of this, to have to sort of speak a little bit about this. But, like, just to throw out the question, we'll sort of go down this road. We definitely talked about this, but I think it's important to hone in a little bit. And that would be, what can the staff do, from the council's viewpoint, to increase the efficiency of your decision-making process? You, the ones that are setting this policy. Okay? So, with that as background, Andrew, please.
Good morning, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members.
Can you please come up here?
You want me to...
Yes, your bags, not for the rest of you.
Uh, sideways?
Yes, that's good.
I usually have a loud mouth. So...
Does everybody know who you are?
Andrew H. Deputy City Manager, Fairpoint, thank you, Stu. On behalf of staff, not speaking directly for one, but from a general consensus, there were some things that you guys were talking about before, some of them, like, it's all my hand, on the timely part of communication. And I think there are some items there that we wanted to at least say, it's one of the tables we have this dialogue, because in the end, staff does take a lot of pride in trying to deliver service. You know, if we hit Service X, that is a goal, that's a real ten. We too are passionate to try to do that. You know, one of the things that we wanted to, I know I made a comment a couple of times when I've been on the floor at council meetings, is, specifically when we talk about videotaping meetings, is, and I look down, I'm looking down the dais, I said, there's a consensus on that, and, you know, there's a book of confused looks, and some not yet. Sure, yeah, go ahead. That consensus parties are big, and I don't know if council residents, perhaps divisive, for state, that some council members have specific issues. And I'm talking about constituent issues, such as there's piles, you know, in certain areas that we do need to take care of, and state roads, we try to really work with those residents. You know, that falls on Tom, or Carol, or myself, in the communication, on Dell Doc, you know. But, you know, we don't want to do the municipal pump, sometimes we do work with that. Not those types of constituent issues. Sometimes it's your personal policy, because Luke talked about, Mark talked about, Rob Sells, you know, about policy. Well, and really, it goes back to then, what the Otis, to you, Mayor, about, said, well, what's the consensus of council on a certain policy? Because, you know, myself, or Tom, or Lou, or any partner, you know, anybody might say, well, I, I, I understand Stu wants to go this direction, but I think Luke wants to go this direction. Which direction are we supposed to work on? So, sometimes that does conflict with our day-to-day efforts of, what's the consensus of council? So, you're a consensus body, and that gives directives to Carol, that we're going to go get done. So, that's one, from a communication standpoint, that consensus will give us a very, much sharper in your pencil, finite direction of where to go. Sometimes background information, you know, maybe there are different opinions as you develop a policy, we need to come up with different scenarios. As you talked about, Mark, about options, you know, and we're happy to try to do that. You know, but the question is, sometimes, well, what is the pleasure of council that we're pleasuring? Really, the pleasure for votes, which suits directive, and we're going to go down that road. That would be really helpful for staff, because a lot of times, the parole place, and we're still, we're spinning our wheels, we don't know which direction. Kind of following Carol's side, you know, we try to sometimes, and sometimes we do muddle through it, we could all think of those meetings where we muddle through it, or somehow more specific expertise. And so, when we deliver that expectation, then it might confuse rest of council, we're like, well, why did I need this? So, that's helpful from a staff perspective, from a communication standpoint, on how and what we dialogue on. Another one we talked about, and I think, I think Mark, you needed to comment, we feel like that experts will say, you know, we try to bring forward items that we've reviewed, and we are supportive in it. Rob and I had this dialogue, but, you know, we're good with agreeing to disagree. You know, that is healthy, you know, can we done it report better? Can we done it a different format? I know Stu's been on Lou about formatting, and some of the things that we've had, from an annual standpoint. But from a staff standpoint, you know, we, we know we have no thick skin, you know, we know you stand on the floor, you know you're going to have thick skin. But in the last 12 months, there's been a general under feeling that, you know, it's either been demeaned or ridiculed, in part, that, that mean, you don't know what you're going to get when you come to the floor. In part, by council, but also by the public. You know, there's that organizational structure that we want to serve the public, and we have that perfunctory role that we all play, to deliver those services. You know, if, there is, there's a growing feeling that the experts, that whether you believe or don't believe, or on staff, are secondary to the tier of public comment. That public comment will have greater value over a staff comment. That is a growing sentiment in the last 12 months. Not that we can't deliver a report differently, you know, if we can do something, if we can look at, but that's a growing sentiment, that it's like, you know, the public comments become public exposition, to be more fair. And it varies from topic to topic, some are pretty, this is great, we're all on the same page, we belong here. So, from a dialogue standpoint, is what can we be doing better for that council-staff relation? You know, and, you know, to go through that. And we welcome, and we talked about that funnel before, the hourglass, and when I've done council member orientation, I always talk about two analogies, the hourglass, or the, the, you know, from the local government, council managers' style of government. You know, we welcome, if council directly emails any of us, knowing that we've replied, Carol or myself are going to be included to keep that hourglass funnel going, because if, you know, if we kind of usurped that, you get away from, well, why was it a blood? And then, the public expectation to go through staff to say, well, we are delivering this, and we're catered to what someone's doing or request, you know, we can't deliver that service to you to do that. So, I mean, those are a couple items on staff's part, you know, that, and I don't know if anybody else wants to jump in on any other specific comments. So, Lou and Tom.
I guess, what can we provide you, or what are you looking for in the weekly report? Because we're kind of back and forth torn on, do we just give you the, kind of, the big items? Are you looking for everything? You know, it's important to us that we don't lose the important things in the mass, but we also want you to realize what's going on in the city, in case you see something. So, is there a certain format that would be beneficial? Tim and I were in the back talking about, you know, council member requests, like what Stu was speaking, maybe we throw those into the weekly report, so they, boom, they're public. Everybody gets to see what's being asked, and what's being answered. You know, are you looking for, kind of, the big things? Are you looking for, we replaced a curb here, we fixed a pothole there? Are you looking, we attended a meeting on flood protection for the cities, and, you know, are you looking big picture or small picture? And just so we can provide you what you want.
I sort of, I read that weekly, I read it. And I read Renee's as well, word for word. And I think you all do a pretty good job of communicating the way that you're doing. Having said that, I don't see why you couldn't include just a little two-column or three-column Excel chart. You don't even have to list the council member's name. Just list the name of the project, and what the, where it is right now.
I mean, what has come up in the last two weeks that we should be...
Yeah, the, right.
And I will call Josh out upon, is Josh still here? Yeah. His format, in my opinion, is his format of that chart that he uses. I mean, it's effective for me in its format. So, I don't know how the rest of council feels on that, but I think that's, it's just bullet point, and it's in chart form, and, you know, it's, it's important.
Not looking to add a lot more time...
Right.
...for staff.
But, but something like that might actually end up netting us savings of time. If we give you what you want in an effective manner, it reduces an number of questions and...
I do find those weekly reports incredibly important. I mean, I read it word for word, too, because that's how personally I find out about what's going on in certain districts in a lot of the boroughs. And so, I think that spending time on the weekly report is important. I think probably more information is better than less information, from a knowledge standpoint of what we know before the council meeting, and of course, it's important that we all read them before the council meeting, so that we know. So, I would, I would put more than less.
I agree, I find it, I think it's a very valuable piece of information.
Well, I'll throw in my two cents, it has a lot of good information. I would probably stick with the top items, but give me a location where I can find the detail. All right? And that's what it comes back to, my whole list here is, okay, I may not care about potholes on...
Park Place.
I don't care about Park Place, but if I've got a list of road projects in my district, I want to go see what they are, when they're happening, who's responsible, what the holdup is. Give me the high level, the things that you really want us to know, that there's something coming up soon, that you need to be worried about, or concerned about, or knowledgeable about, but give me a place where I can find the detail. And since I'm the technology guy, you can give it to me electronically, so I can search it, and other people can search it. You can, I'm, sorry, Mark. But...
A technology guy.
Right. Well, to me, I like the technology, because I, the half of more information, will have more information, more details, it'll be harder to find things unless it's in a forum that people can search, or something along those lines. And I think that would actually make, I don't know, let's say, staff's job easier, because I don't have to pick up the phone and say, where's this, or where's that? You will see the emails and know what you have to concentrate on, because I'm not coming back to you three times saying, where is this project? And you've got to filter through all those, and I'll, I'll have one place that I can find the detail.
I'll jump in, I treat staff slightly differently. I'm in town, because I work all through town all day, and often, Public Works, for example, I'll pick up the phone and say, hey, there's this problem right here, right now, you know, just because on the eye it's there right now. Or this, there's a safety issue. The one I remember as an example was downtown, when we replaced the trip hazard on the, on Main Street with the bricks, we actually created a different problem, where, and I was like, hey, you know, we've got to do something right now, because this is, you know, a problem this second. And so, when I pick up the phone like that, I have, I don't conference in Carol, but it's a very immediate thing. I've tried to get better, keeping a copy, when I emailed staff, and when I email, that's less immediate. And sometimes it's just a question, it's a question to Lou, or it's a question to Charlie, typically, sometimes the chief, sometimes Rick Vitell. Rick's questions are usually out of curiosity. You know, I'm interested in how our system works. So, you know, that's much more of a casual discussion. With you, typically, it's something more immediate. With Lou, you know, he's a money guy, it's about money typically, or with Andrew, sometimes it's personnel. And then I'll have broader scale, citywide issues that I talk to you directly. So, I have a couple different ways of communicating, and while I will not direct you to fix a pothole, I do expect it fixed. So, that's the only place where I tread that very fine line of actually directing staff. And that's the only example I can think of where I do that. And I'll do it...
You should know that staff is very good at letting me know, when they communicate.
Oh, sure.
It's a long tradition of sharing information with me, so I'm very comfortable with that.
And I have a, part of the other thing I'm doing is trying not to waste your time. So, while I need to keep you informed, it's not something that Tom can't take care of. And usually, I see that as a public safety issue right now.
Can I, can I, just, part of the feeling of that nature? Because it's kind of like when, if you're someone's direct supervisor, if you walk by, no one, you know, you can operate with no hubers whatsoever, in theory, you're going to get that person to agitate. You are members of the public, you are members of the community, but once you go from this seat to that seat, there's a reality without regard to any one of you, you're a council member. So, you're going to get staff's attention when you walk in the door, when you pick up the phone, when you send us an email. So, your, your comment there, Mark, it's a tangible example, but it's not specific to you, is, the feeling from staff is that it's clearly that, and once you bring up the conversation, kind of like when you argue with your spouse, and the second they bring it up, you know you're wrong, and then, the conversation could stop, but, you know, it may not, but you know that moment is said, it's a priority. But the balance of that priority is saying, that pothole, it's clearly in your focus, but it's maybe de minimis from the operational standpoint, and Tim's on vacation, and he has the other guys deployed, you know, there might be some other urgent scenario. So, trying to find and strike that balance, so it's very, staff doesn't want to be disrespectful to the wishes of council, and trying to, it's trying to find that balance from a communication standpoint, because, you know, we're never, no one's in the business of, when you say something, the first answer is, well, no, you know, that's, that's not our role, it's going to be, we're going to try to figure out how to make that happen. But maybe either expressing that, you know, Tom, what's, what's a reasonable timeline to get that done? That's going to be helpful, so, from anybody's issue of analysis for finance, or stuff like that, just know, and I mean, from a staff standpoint, when you walk in the door, you're a council member, you're going to command a different response, and a different respect, and when you say something, a lot of times, like Carol said, we're coming back to her, is because, Rob wants this, how, how do we deliver it? How do we get there? Because I, you know, what is, what is that time frame, too? I just wanted to say from half the staff, whether you guys will book it at that point.
Yeah, okay. And let me build on this example for a second. And we talked before the winter time, and I gave you a whole list of, a bunch of issues on the public roads before they became spring potholes. And it wasn't fix this now, and it wasn't even fix this, it was talk to me about these, and what are, what's our, you know, the last time I called specifically was a pothole outside of the Wawa, between the Wawa and the State Building, on that side road, that was about four feet wide, and a foot and a half deep. That's a perpetual problem. But at the time, it was half the size of this table, you know. So, and it wasn't a fix this now, it was a, you know, hey, whose problem is this? Is it the landowners, is it the state, is it ours, is it, you know, whatever, whatever. So, I try to be cognizant of that, you know, but in every other thing, if it's staff, you know, I'll go to Carol, because I can't direct staff. That's not my, you know, that's not my job.
So, I didn't mean my, my comments...
Yeah, yeah.
Whether, as council members, and as, as some newer, like, who never looked at it and realized, you know, Marge would love to probably give us all hugs. But at the same time, staff is going to do...
But you would underestimate me.
Well, exactly true. But as staff, you, you're a council member, and your requests are going to be viewed as a high priority, and the balance of how we get that done.
Let me give you an example, another example. I just did it to her during the break, you know. I held her by the shoulders, and I said, look around this room, where are the fire exits? Our law requires the fire exits to be lit. And I only remembered to do it because she brought up the safety, she said something about safety. And I was like, I was looking at the door, and I was like, where's, where's the sign? Where's the sign? You know? And, and so, yes, we had that conversation, and she said, you know, I'll get it done. My concern is, we'll get it done for this room. You know, we won't do it for every building in the, in the town. We're not in every building in the town, we're in this room. But here we are, and, and it's probably grandfather's. You know, I fully believe it's grandfather's. I also fully believe it's wrong. So...
So, if I can vocalize what I think I'm here, what we've just agreed on right now, is, the administrative reports are important means of sharing communication between council members and city staff. And that city staff is going to summarize, little council member, like, when we contact you, and that's going to be part of the report now, with some possible external link, so that Stu could go search and replace. But also, what I'm hearing is, we're all interested in process improvement here. So, what I would like to take away from today is something real, something that we can all work on, to make things better for the citizens of Newark, and for, make it easier for camp, better for council, not necessarily easier. So, having said that, at this point, I'd like to know what other council members would like to take away from this. Because I mean, I think the communication issue, we've got it, we need to do a better job at it, with the public, and with ourselves, and with city staff. But I'm also hearing that there are some process improvement things that need to be done. And I also did hear, actually, early on, and it was touched on and went away, we need to remember to treat each other with respect. All of us, council members with each other, with city staff, city staff already, you just said, when a council member walks in the room, that we have the respect, we just have to remember, and, and the public as well, we're people, too. Everybody deserves respect. So, we all have to work on that as well. Having said that, I would, I would like to know, what if, if any other council member has a desire to take something away from today's experience? For direction, I need direction, you know, it's, well, we're passionate.
Well, Mark, let me just sort of jump in, I, it's a great idea, I, the, the sort of end of the table here of council, didn't speak up quite as much, if you will, on this issue of communication to the staff, we just started, it's great, I don't know if there's anything that the three of you specifically want to say.
The only thing I wanted to say was, and we've talked about it before, you've got some weird issue, that, that I guess it was like the stormwater between an old building, it was grandfather, it's changed everywhere, New York Job Center. Just to throw some pictures in there, and show the distance and stuff like that, maybe. Luke said he was visual, too, I'm kind of a visual person, I need to see that a little bit more than what was done, but we've already talked about that, and seeing many others just come up then, you don't think we could visualize it, we provide a couple pictures, that's all.
Well, I'm going to expand, just, sorry, can you use the word weird issue? One of my messages is, no surprises, I don't want to find a surprise from anybody. Let me know of something, even if you're like, eh, this may not come to be, don't let it be a surprise to me, who some other source.
And I think the one thing that we definitely agree upon is, the reports are definitely all in different formats, some, some formats we like better than others. I think Josh's format is the easiest to read, and you get some history, you know, it's not, you have to create it from scratch each week, you know. So, that might be helpful, and I think they all agree upon that. But it seems like there's two separate issues here, we were talking about the inquisition from the public, and then we started talking about the weekly reports. I mean, I feel like I get a good amount of information from the weekly reports, there was a few things omitted, and I talked to Carol about things that I'd like to see more of, you know, specifically related to issues around... Oh, sure. I'd like to see, there's always issues that don't make the weekly reports, and so I like, you know, I do feedback that information, I'm only going to counsel short time, so a few times have I fed that information, but I don't think that weekly reports and the public inquisition thing are the same issue, so I'd like to hear more about that afterward, you know, Doug talked about weekly reports, and I have reporting. And I think that staff, you guys are feeling that way, I mean, eventually it's funneled either to you, or Carol, and we want to hear about that. We, I, I think that we want to hear timely and direct feedback. And I don't expect, if I'm requesting something from the staff, or do you feel like it's a demand, or something like that? It is not. You know, I'm trying to bring up things that concern my district, how much you prioritize them on a list. You're an expert about the potholes, I've only seen that one, you know, and if that one's smaller than the other, and you have something else first, that's fine. And last week, for example, there was something filled on Elton Road, I thought the timeline that you got to fill in was, I hope you didn't go out of your way to prioritize me in front of somebody else. I don't expect that, so, I want to be treated just like you would treat a member of the public. And if you have a problem with the way that you're being treated, I want to hear about it, and I want to hear about that. And that's kind of the culture I've been brought up at the company I work at, so, I expect that in the city as well. And I don't think that's any different for anyone here.
We all have different backgrounds, so, I'm just...
No, no, I don't think it's any different about how the bad report should go. I mean, I don't think that anyone expects, that we're, we can't demand from staff, you know, we can suggest things that we see, you know, we can ask for things to get done. And we, we have an administrator that we use to help correct those activities, you know, and we can voice our real deep concerns, you know, with Carol, or with Andy, you know, I don't know, how it works.
We talked a lot about potholes. I don't know how we do potholes. I don't know how we rank them, I don't know how often we look for them, I don't know how often, you know, which ones get preference, I don't know any of that stuff. So, staff has an opportunity to educate me on the correct way that this should be happening, and then I'll do it differently.
Well, I think, fair point.
For example, you know, there are many other things I don't know, but since we've talked about this one and all the other, you know, I don't know how it starts, so I just do what I see.
Well, no, that goes forward a lot of times, you know, Stu provides the luxury of exposure, you know, most of the, you know, the systemic city perfunctory roles, and Public Works has a rating system up to 100, how they get there, and in all that except...
No, 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 no.
No, no, that's an example of how and when you say, okay, the pothole road analysis, what, refresh and break it up, because your orientation, you know, gets your exposure to the people and the departments, but then there's so, every department has something that's extensive, and how Steve would rate a millimeter would be uninhabitable.
It would be a mistake to assume my orientation was anything like you do now.
All the same, there's, there's probably many things that if there's a topical item to express to Carol, that we can do an educational session, because there's, every department's going to have such a depth of how they rate or go through those things, I think. And again, what's that consensus part of, which one should we focus on? You know, that, because there's different things.
That's our issue.
Just in terms of communication, it seems like there's always an issue of closing, you know, either council giving the direction, staff providing information, I mean, and one reason why I ask for detail is, I would say, well, did you use whatever feature on the website to report this? And you'd say, yeah, I reported this pothole, I got no response, I had no idea where it is. So, this is closing in the loop on many different communication areas.
I, I...
I kind of want to talk.
I was just going to say, it's funny that you're talking about potholes as the, for example, because actually, I just did have a pothole constituent concern on West Park, and, but it was, I did ask for not just the hole to be filled, can you give me, can you tell me what the, what the timeline would be, and tell me just a little bit more? And I got a fantastic report about the pothole plan and the street plan for that part of town from Tom, that, it was like, great, it was every, it was every question that I would have had, and I, I, I got that for a constituent, and it was, it was fantastic.
Sounds like I need to send it out to everybody, then.
Oh.
Sounds like, yeah.
To me, the point is, you asked a question, yes.
But I asked.
My point was, the constituent used the tool and got the response. And then they followed up with me, which I have some questions. So, we need to close that, we need to, that's why I keep asking for detail, what are the issues, so anybody can see what's going on.
Well, let's put a system in place where we can all learn together. Because your constituent knows that, so you've got one person out of 5,000, and now you, so that's another one out of staff, that's two people out of 15,000.
They know they can use the tool, and then you can see the follow-up by using that tool, they're more likely to use that tool.
So, we need...
Whereas if they use the tool, don't get a follow-up, and they have to go to council, the tools work.
We need to look at the tool, though, and see if, when this person clicks submit, does it only go to one box, or does a copy of that go to whoever the district's fourth person is, which would be you, and at that point, you're now part of the process. Six, seven, 12.
It doesn't need...
But the point being, maybe the form needs a tweak to make it more efficient for us. But the point being, maybe the form needs a tweak to make it more efficient for us.
Can you have, does the city have anything where they put classes on for, like, folks that want to learn our website, learn where these different things are at, that's the trying to figure out? Just have something where they come in, and say, all right, if you come into this particular time, have a person put it in, and they can learn this website, learn when to get the technology, and it would be...